Thank you everyone for testing fate and coming out tonight. Incredibly strange world we're in now. We're here to discuss budget basically. If it wasn't for the budget, we would not be probably holding this meeting, so. But we are, it is time sensitive and it's the only reason why we're here tonight or the main reason. We'll fill in a few other small items while we're here, but to get, why don't we move things along and just go to the budget. We can do the others later and then that way you can, you can leave. So if you'd like to, let's, let's move that up to, to the review of the budgets, to the top of the list.
Okay. So the first page of the packet is budget changes to the general fund after the meeting, some other changes that I went through, that I may have needed to make. So for revenue, we, I added all from fund balance, six thousand for the firehouse Walder Steve had talked about, forty thousand for gas pump and associated repairs, and fifteen to continue the little updates here, including maybe looking at the HVAC system. Those are just some other big projects that were being talked about. We can put them in, take them out. We've been doing capital projects from the fund balance and that's why I took them out of there. So the matching expenses are in municipal building repair line for those three things.
What's the HVAC?
The air conditioning?
I understand. What about the air?
It was for the possibility of installing like a split unit for the, for my office and Jeff's office and whoever's not connected with the main system here. Right now it's air conditioners in walls. So I, I think some of the, I think it's true with these. I mean, we can't, I mean, we don't have to use these or they're not set to be spent. So that was the number where, I think we're putting in there in case we, you know, if we look into it and the numbers come out right and it makes sense, then we can do it. If not, we just don't do it.
Right, and then we'll go back into the balance anyway. For expenses, all the personal services lines were adjusted according to the discussions. I include, I upped the taxes and I upped the retirement. So a total of nineteen thousand was added, but the majority of that is one specific department. There was one particular person that's a big chunk of this. And then there's currently a vacancy in a department. And if we increase the starting salary because we're looking at better qualifications, that's the other big chunk of that money.
So the whole personal services, that's all the raises we were talking about. Okay. I would like to, we, we had, everybody chipped in and got information on, from all these other communities. So I think it sheds a better light on what we're at instead of just, we were shooting in the dark a little bit, I think, or from the hip or whatever, wherever you're shooting from. Last time, we didn't really have any bases for anything. We felt that we weren't paying, you know, people enough. There was requests for raises and, you know, we really didn't have anything to compare that to. So we now have stuff from Phillips Town, Cornwall, Island Falls, Beacon, Wapinjers, Fishville, and New York State, or transportation, public county transportation. So I don't know if anyone had time to review that or if you're all happy the way it is, that's fine. Did Jeff put that in? Anyone, did he send that at all?
Yes.
Yes, it's in our.
It should be in what we got.
Is it in a pack? I have, I brought copies of the Putnam County.
I think he included.
He just.
He did include that?
Yeah, it's more of a.
They should be.
Cause I picked it up with the papers we got tonight, so.
Okay. Oh, I see. I, I've got the comparison here.
We, I didn't want to show you, so we're talking about like a higher starting salary. Where does that leave us with people who are currently employed?
I didn't know that that was something.
I can take it back out. So currently the vacancy in the highway department was earning, it was hired at eighteen, got a dollar raise at nineteen. So if we're looking for somebody with a CDL, mechanical experience and a couple other things, I bumped up the starting pay to twenty-two or twenty-three dollars an hour to give us wiggle room in case we found the perfect candidate. Doesn't mean we have to expend it. I can bring it back down to nineteen dollars an hour. I can even go back down to sixteen. If we're looking for a CDL, I increased it so that we have the room to hire someone, but we don't have to.
No, that's, I was just wondering if we were thinking in general of raising everyone or just, just because we have the space and that, that's fine with me. Just to leave it in a budget like that doesn't lock us into anything at this point until we hire.
I'm fine with that. I'm hopefully getting someone that's not going to be higher, but.
Right.
Or.
And there was talks about.
Right now we have thirteen people apply for this job, five of which are, are potentials. None of which have mechanical skills.
Okay.
One has a CDL.
Is that because we, we advertise in a different place?
No, I think we advertise the same place as we did last time. It's online with the Journal News, which is Pecati and the Journal.
Okay.
So we've got people from Rocoamo that are actually, so I don't think they're going to be traveling up here. But looking at that, right now highway crew chief is what, is how much are we, is he, is he being paid?
Currently?
Yes, with stipend. It comes out to how much an hour was it approximately?
It was like, I think like thirty-three.
Thirty, yeah, that's right. It was thirty-three. And we were going to bump it to thirty-seven. Is that right?
Well, we were going to add four dollars an hour total, so.
Right, right. So the whole thing would be thirty-seven.
So that's the eighty-three hundred, that's.
So like Cornwall has, and it's, I guess it's hard to, you know, to break some of this not apples to apples. A working leader equivalent to crew chief is thirty dollars an hour. Island Falls supervisor is twenty-five dollars an hour, but they also have someone, a superintendent above that. Beacon is, the superintendent's forty-one. Wapinjers is thirty-one, but they have a department of DPDW, which is thirty-eight dollars an hour. Fishville is thirty-six dollars an hour. And Putnam County is, I guess it's about, it's twenty-two dollars an hour, but they, they have raises guaranteed a dollar every first four years. So does anyone have further thoughts on those raises or should we be discussing this? This is the time to discuss this, I would imagine, Michelle?
Okay.
If we, if we want, based on this information, what we were talking about, thirty-seven, is everyone good with that?
Can we circle back to that?
Hmm?
When we go through the budget, leave that alone, leave it as it is in the budget and then come back and have a discussion about what the current hourly rate is in the budget versus the hourly rates that, that were identified for other locations.
I thought was since we were the first bullet point out was, was expenses, like that's why, that's why I jumped in there. It's better at least from other time, I'm fine.
No, I, I just do, I, I didn't jot down the hourly rates.
Yeah, cause you, you were just reading those up.
What's that?
The hourly, cause I was looking at annual rates here and you were, you were giving us an hourly.
Hourly.
Yeah, I broke it down to hourly.
Wapinjers I see thirty-eight.
What's that?
Wapinjers is thirty-eight.
Can we start from the top? Phillips Town? What's Phillips Town?
Phillips Town is, where are we? Yeah, Phillips Town, their superintendent is ninety-one thousand dollars.
That's about forty.
I didn't break that down.
It's about forty-four, Mary. Forty-three, eighty.
Cornwall?
Cornwall, they have a DPW superintendent at ninety thousand, which I didn't break down. So that's probably about the same.
Forty-three, forty-three.
The working leader, which I hear is equivalent to the crew chief is thirty, forty-eight.
Yep.
Island Falls is supervisor's twenty-five.
Plus a twenty.
What's the superintendent?
Current superintendent, it's split. I guess twenty thousand stipend to oversee. It's hard to break that one down.
Highland, I believe, is also on a five-year lag with no change in salary.
Right, yeah. So they were bumping stuff up. Beacon was forty.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Wapinjers was thirty-one.
Thirty-eight.
What do you have? Thirty-eight is for the superintendent.
Okay, sorry.
The equivalent to crew chief is thirty-one. Those are both good numbers enough. Fishville's thirty-six for a crew chief. And they're pretty much same in size and they do not pick up trash.
And they don't plow.
DOTV don't have one for. And Putnam County, highway superintendent oversees the highway firm salary, not known. And highway department supervisor is twenty-two, eighty an hour.
I think you might have misinterpreted that. The highway commissioner, its commissioner oversees the highway department, but there are five departments within there.
Oh, good.
And so the numbers that I sent were related to each department head, which is called.
Supervisor.
It's called a supervisor. Yeah. So the supervisor starts at twenty-two, yeah. Okay. So this, this is correct then, except for that first line. So the numbers are correct there.
So the supervisor's twenty-two, eighty, and with the dollar raise each year for four years.
And what we're looking at is.
Right now it's thirty-three, about thirty-two something, right? With the stipend. And we were going to bump it and four and split it, two to the stipend and two to a raise.
So.
So we're up to thirty-seven, basically.
And thirty-two, twenty-seven, so we're up to thirty-six, which is.
And we're bringing it to thirty-six, twenty-seven then?
Yep.
Okay.
I think it's odd because these municipalities are sort of all over the place in terms of size. The closest size one is probably Fishville.
Fishville's size in terms of population and square, and area.
And they don't do.
Garbage or recycling.
Garbage or recycling or plowing. So we were bringing it to thirty-six.
The town of Fishville plows the streets in the village of Fishville?
Yeah.
I mean, I can understand Route fifty-two and I can understand Route nine.
A gentleman I spoke to, and I did have his name someplace, so we, the town of Fishville plows for us totally. We don't, they don't even have plows. So if we go to.
So it looks like we're not too far. The ballpark, it's the same as Fishville actually. Or Wapinjers, I think is close, the size. Cornwall is, it's hard to say. I don't know what the DPW superintendent does.
The Wapinjers, the DPW superintendent also does water and sewer. So the equivalent would be the foreman.
Right, and they don't do garbage.
And they don't, they don't do garbage.
So what would be, we're coming in at thirty-six. It isn't, it isn't too far off from what's around.
Fishville pays sixty thousand dollars to their laborers?
Yeah, that's.
No, that's, the second, there's two people in the highway department. The first guy gets seventy-five. They're, they're in the, in the group of seven. There's two and the first guy gets seven and the second guy gets seventy-five, seventy-five and sixty. And those two people are in the responsibility of the highway department. And the other five work for water and sewer. So it's not, it's not really a laborer. It's just the second guy in the, in a two-man team.
You have to ask yourself, what do they do?
And it's not a big place.
They don't do garbage. They don't.
They may do some, cause it's all part of the DPW. So they may do some water and sewer, you know, in addition.
Well, it says two are dedicated to highway. And I'm assuming that two dedicated to the highway are the crew chief and the laborer.
Yes. But what he also said, I think, was, my notes, my notes, my notes. And I thought I sent this, but I think it's actually seventy-five percent of their salaries is highway.
Seventy percent of their salaries?
Seventy-five percent of that seventy-five thousand is highway and they do a little bit of work with the water. So they, they're, it's one whole group of seven people.
So thoughts on that?
Did, did anybody get a sense whether any of these highway guys have mechan, do any kind of mechanical work on the equipment or anything?
I did not get that. I'm sorry. And I never looked.
I did look for that and they do not in either Wapinjers or Beacon.
Yeah, I know, but supervisor.
Putnam County seems to farm it all out too, mechanic, too.
Beacon, I, I thought that one of my beacon numbers, I don't have them with me, is they employ, was it beacon that employs two full-time mechanics?
Yeah, that's what.
But they are separate. I mean, they are called mechanics and they have a, they have a category or, there, mechanics.
Yeah, I see that.
Sorry.
You really can't compare Phillips Town because it's such a, how many people work in Phillips Town? I mean, it's such a massive difference in size.
Yeah.
And staff.
I thought you had said you thought he had twenty people.
What's that?
I thought you said you thought he had twenty people and Carl.
Oh, now it's a rough guess, but I imagine he does. I guess wouldn't ask you nicely.
And he said, and he's got administrative staff as well.
Yes, two staff, yeah. And he has a mechanic.
Full-time?
Full-time.
Okay. Given what we've just gone through, I'm good with what, what you had identified?
I'm, I'm good with what we, what we ended up last time.
Yeah, I am too, though I was wondering if it might be beneficial if we just hire a mechanic and, and create a new position that's just a mechanic that can work on the police cars and the trucks and, you know, the equipment and stuff like that and.
I wonder if there's enough work, there might be internal work now to get things going.
It would have to be a part-time. It would have to be maybe.
My thought was maybe see if we can find someone part-time or if we can put stuff off and don't have to have the right-of-way to get somebody maybe for Saturday.
Yeah, that's it. And then that would maybe put the lift back. Did we take the lift out of the?
I did.
So that may, I was, I was thinking of something similar. If we, if we could get somebody, a mechanic just to work on weekends who was, you know, certified, if there was such a thing. And then maybe put the lift, because I don't know, I don't know if you can compare, like before we had Joe doing mechanic, you know, repairs. How much do we spend on outside repairs? And then how much do we spend when Joe was working for us? If we can get, you know, the same time period. I don't, I don't know. I know that he worked on water, he worked on police and he worked on highway now. You know, how much money that saved us or, you know, I don't, I don't know any of that. And, you know, I, I was thinking similar. Should we hire somebody that's a mechanic?
I think, I guess it's a discussion for, not right now.
Other time, okay. It's fine.
I mean, I agree with, exactly. And I think, I think we're all thinking the same thing. We need to maybe find somebody to do that.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the numbers.
That may be.
Okay. So the number for highway crew chiefs is four dollars split. Okay?
That's good.
The next is, just quickly is.
Sorry, just to go back, is it okay to, for the vacancy to leave the starting salary at twenty-two versus nineteen?
What's that?
For the vacancy in the highway department, I've put a placeholder for twenty-two an hour instead of nineteen an hour. Is that okay to leave it like that or should I bring it back down?
Leave it there.
I think you can leave it there, but I would definitely shooting for.
Lower.
Right now. Like somewhere more than nineteen.
Okay.
So entry levels for, you know, I don't think we're too far outside. Some of them are, are a lot higher. So we were going to bring them up a dollar, is that right? Is that what we decided on?
I'm lost, I'm lost with you. I'm sorry. I lost track of my.
I think it was your full dollar.
Yes, and.
For the.
No, we gave them two percent.
Two current laborers we have, we only allocated two percent.
Oh, two percent, okay. All right.
Is that a discussion you want to have to up it or keep it at the two percent?
No, I think, because folks who wasn't recommending much, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're going with the foreman's recommendation there. So I would leave that. And the others were three percent?
It, others meaning different people?
Meaning super, the other, all the other employees. I thought we grouped the others.
No, we did person by person. So there was twos, threes, fours.
I would recommend not doing that. I do not like doing that in a small, small group. I, I just think we have a, what's that?
Yeah, Michelle, four. We give Jeff three.
Right. I, I, I think we should keep it. I think they're all valuable. I think everyone has their assets. And I think, I don't know why we should just break it down to different people. I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's great for morale to like to break it down like that in a very close group of people.
So how do you want to do it?
I think we should give a, a some percentage, like three percent or something, instead of going with dollars, like.
Yeah, that's what we were doing, three percent for, because we, we gave Michelle four percent.
They have saying across the board.
Right, yeah.
One number. So two percent for everybody.
We went down by percentages, but we gave, I think, I don't have my sheets.
I haven't what we did, but the question is, do we want to keep it allocated by person that we discussed last meeting? Do we want to scrap that idea and just give three percent to everybody? That's where we're at. People we discussed or do three percent for everybody? Two percent for everybody?
Well, I think we should give the two percent where that was recommended. And I think the rest of the staff, I would recommend going with three percent.
I am sorry. We had a recommendation, I thought, from water and wastewater for an individual to get, get more than two percent.
More than what?
More than two percent.
Right. I said three percent.
For that.
For everyone besides laborers for highway to, the recommendation from highway crew chief was actually zero. And we brought that to two percent.
Actually, even with water, the recommendation for Louis was, you know, sort of the minimum because he's bounced up as he's, he's doing his education. And he, he thought he was, he thought he was in line with that position in other places. So we had done, I think, a dollar for, yeah, we did a dollar for Matt. We did four percent for Michelle, three percent for Jeff, two percent for Kathy and, and. And, sorry, I'm brain, it's, it's a brain dead night. And then what else did we do?
A dollar for Scott.
Water.
So what did we do for, what did we do for a dollar for Scott? And do we do a dollar for Matt?
What's Matt making now?
Ninety.
What's Matt making now?
Ninety thousand.
Ninety.
But that includes his stipend. And he was, he was comfortable with that. I mean, we felt that he.
And I, I didn't think we were going to do an increase for the deputy justice.
No, we weren't. Yeah, that's, we aren't going to do that.
That was going to stay flat.
So three percent on ninety thousand, what is that?
Well, we would do three percent on, so seventy-five is what he, seventy-five thousand is his hourly. So he would go from thirty-six oh six for a three percent. That would bring him to thirty-seven fourteen. It's an increase of twenty-two hundred.
And hourly, what's that? Sorry.
Thirty-seven fourteen hourly.
This is for.
No, hourly, what would the increase, sorry, what would the increase be hourly? From what is getting that?
Oh, a dollar and eight cents.
Yes, we had gone to flat dollar.
What's that?
We had gone to flat dollar on that. Yeah, I was okay with the way, I didn't think it was that much all over the place.
I, I, I would disagree, but I'll go with whoever the board wants. If they, I defined in a small, in a small group that someone in the next room is not getting quite as much or one percent less, I think that, I don't know.
Well, you're going, the proposal is to go high for the clerk, for the water and wastewater superintendent, the highway crew chief, and the, one of the laborers in water and wastewater. Everyone else is two percent.
The only one that's two percent right now was, the way we had done it, was two guys for highway.
Along with the justice clerk, the part-time clerk here in the office.
Okay.
And the water.
Secretary to the board and rec was also two percent.
Did we do?
And also the crossing guards.
They went up to minimum wage.
Right.
A little bit more than two percent because New York State minimum wage in December of next budget year would be twelve fifty.
So the only ones that weren't.
December of next year.
Yeah, so we decided to just start them in June at twelve fifty.
December of twenty twenty or December of twenty-one?
I thought we were going to do that next year and then we're going to do it in this fiscal year.
Starting June of twenty because January of twenty, January first twenty twenty-one, it has to go up to twelve fifty. So they get six months of a couple extra cents.
But, but that's not until the next fiscal year.
Okay.
This fiscal.
Now, it's the one we're talking about.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. This fiscal year ends May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
That we're talking about, yes.
Right. And minimum wage goes up December of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty.
I thought you said twenty twenty-one.
So the only, the only people that were outside of the two percent was accountant, the boat clerk and wire supervisor and water laborer. Everyone else was in the two percent in highway. Everyone else was in the two percent.
Did you have, before we got into the discussion last, last week, do you have this three percent across the board? What, and that versus what we came up with, with this mixed bag of numbers?
I think it was the two percent and the five percent.
Right. I have three percent calculated here. I don't have with me the total for, what the board discussed. I only had the increase because I had already put some of that raise into the budget. But I have it calculated in my computer that I could let you know. But don't want to decide tonight.
You, you, you gave us what we discussed last time, the spreadsheet that I have.
Oh, okay. Can I?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure when.
So three percent across the board for all funds would be nineteen thousand eight oh eight, including the taxes and pension. What was discussed at the meeting for all the funds would be twenty-five thousand. Keeping in mind that because Bugsy's an outlier, that's eighty-three hundred, the increase.
So you'd add that to the nineteen? Yes.
No, I added that.
A prorated amount, so call it like six thousand. You'd be about at the same spot either way that you did it in terms of file number in the budget.
So it would be a few thousand more if we go with three percent.
What, my notes are different from the last meeting. I had one percent increase for the highway crew.
And then at the end of, we decided that the mayor brought up that we didn't feel that that was fair. And that's why I bumped it to two.
My notes show one. I have one dollar for Matt, two percent for those, one dollar for Scott.
Mm-hmm.
And two percent for those that weren't mentioned.
Except for the accountant in the village clerk.
No, including the acting justice, no increase.
Right. Yeah, cause I have, we have more for the village clerk and accountant. Yeah, 'cause I have, that we have approved more for the village clerk and accountant.
I, I have no notes on the village clerk, so I, if.
I don't really discuss that, I feel like.
If, if there was a discussion, I, I assumed was, I, because I don't have any notes, I'm assuming that it was the standard increase, two percent.
Well, if everyone wants to break it down, then we should make sure we're on the same page. I'm, I'm totally against it, I just don't think it's a good thing to do.
Can we take a quick step back then and pull the board? Um, we know that Mayor wants to do an across-the-board, Fran feels that we should do person by person.
With the exception of, uh, Bucky.
Okay.
I think we should.
How does Lynn and Marie feel? Do you want an across-the-board, or do you like person by person?
I'm a little uncomfortable with both. And I know that sounds really namby-pamby, but I, I feel like we should reward people that have demonstrated exceptional value for the money that we pay them, and I think we should reward that. I also believe that people deserve just a cost of living increase across the board. Though, I'm coming at it from, from the perspective of a, of a private business owner, that's the way I kinda think about races, and I'm not totally comfortable with just giving it across-the-board percent. I'm comfortable with giving it across-the-board percent with the exception of a few people that we should reward for exceptional duty.
So you're more towards the person by person, then?
Yeah.
Marie, what's your thoughts? Person by person or across the board?
I had, never mind, um. We don't have any criteria for evaluating people who have performed as expected, underperformed, or overperformed. Given that, it's very difficult to say, we should do this, or we should do that. However, having said that, we have recommendations from the Highway Crew Chief and the Water and Waste Water Superintendent to recognize, um, certain people in the depart, in their departments, and it seems to me that they, they, those two people, those two superintendents or crew chief know better than we what their people are worth. Having said that, if they weren't identified by either of those two people, then I, a standard percent increase, but I'm, I'm, I would keep it at two percent for those people that were not mentioned.
So that leaves, the people who were not mentioned is basically this office staff, and, um, the board secretary and Rec.
The what?
The board secretary and Rec.
The board secretary?
Michael.
Oh, the, yes, the board secretary, um, the crossing guards, which are different, the justice clerk, whatever, um, the office assistant, whatever the title is there.
Okay, so it sounds like everyone wants to go with the mixed bag. Just let everyone know that I did not take part in it. Seriously, I mean that, I don't wanna.
You're on TV, so.
What's that?
You're, you're on TV.
Uh, yeah, well, I would just like, when people, if people start bitching that I want, want them to know that it's not with that. I value all of them, uh, whoever they are in their little, that's in life. Um, so, that's a different, I guess the one thing is then, um, I, we, we discussed two percent at the end of the meeting, Marie doesn't remember that, so are we going with two percent? I think that's the one thing, the last thing, they just gotta decide on, and let's move on. Marie said it was one percent, I believe it was two.
No, no, that, sorry, what I have noted is a one percent for certain people.
Right, right, and then we changed that to two, towards the end of the meeting, but, maybe that wasn't,
I think, yeah, I think, I think we changed it.
So let's, uh, you know, agree on that totally, or not.
And that was just for the two Highway.
What's that?
That was just for the two Highway.
Right, but, so, but they were the only ones, everyone else was two percent, besides the ones that you changed.
Yes, yes.
And I'm good with two percent.
So, the question is, are we going with two percent for the two Highway guys also, which will give them a massive about fifteen dollars more a week, which I don't know what they're gonna do with. Plus, they're gonna get a thousand dollars anyway from the government now, and they'll, they'll be fine. So, no, just, all kidding aside, and I'm not really kidding, um, what percentage do you wanna give those two guys?
If we're ju, I'll opine, if we're doing an across-the-board, two percent.
No, we're not doing across-the-board. Everyone decided, you, Fran, and Lynn believe that there should be a merit-type based pay, and everything that we discussed last time, you guys are all fine with. The one thing that we were not, that I wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page with, this is what my understanding of this conversation is, was the one percent you thought was for Highway, and we thought it was two percent.
And I, when I answered Michelle, I said two percent.
Do you want to, I mean, we have, we have a handful of people getting two percent. The court clerk, the, um, part-time village clerk, the assistant here, um, the two Highway laborers, the water laborer, and.
And that's it?
Michael and, and Bruce.
Oh, Michael, yes.
So if we raise them to three percent, it's only gonna give them like about fifteen cents or something, it's, it's, I mean, it's not gonna give them a heck of a lot of money, so, I mean, if you're comfortable giving them three percent, I mean.
No, two percent.
Two percent.
Lynn? There's what, five people, four people?
Yeah, I mean, the difference between two percent and three percent is the difference of, like, for, for the court clerk, twenty cents, or twenty-two cents. I mean, I know there were people that we, that we bumped up, because we thought they were worth more, but if you wanna go with the smaller people, going from bringing up to three percent, I'm comfortable doing that, too.
I think given the circumstances, we should be a bit conservative, so I'm, I'm gonna, even though my gut tells me I'd rather do three percent, I'm gonna go with two.
Okay, we're stuck on two, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, not vote on this one, so, so, are everyone's good with everything? As we discussed.
Actually, as it turns out, if it's a vote, it doesn't pass.
Well, it's not really a vote.
Okay.
I don't think it's a vote, has to be a vote.
No, I was just trying to pull the board so we can move forward with the conversation. And, you know, when I put together the tentative budget, there is a salary schedule in there, um, and then when the budget gets adopted, then that's when the raises would be adopted as well. Um, so we have until, you know, April twenty-fourth, you know, if big changes need to be made.
We identified the people, that includes the justice.
Yes, that two percent, but not the.
But not the assistant, the temporary.
Whatever.
I could type up a summary sheet, just so everybody can see it, and everybody says, okay.
Okay.
We could do that.
I'd, I'd like to do that, I'd like to see that before I can, before you include it. I don't, I don't have what I, what you gave us last week, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Okay, sorry I was taking someone. I just think, well, basically, you know, our last conversation was this, uh, well, and I should've controlled that, so.
So then moving on, um, I increased the prosecute, prosecutorial attorney, whatever that word is that I can't say. An attorney that's going to prosecute for us in court, um, I added fifty-four hundred, 'cause we got the first invoice, and it was over five hours, it was seven and a half, it's entirely a work. So I increased that, I hope eight hours should be enough. Shared services.
Just back to prosecuting, he stopped in when, when I was here, so I think he, I think that was, I think it's good to add that money, but just so everyone knows, I think that he thinks it's gonna be less than that, you know, than that last billing period, 'cause I think he's getting it together on, out of, you know, everything.
If you, if you type up his invoice, there's, there appears to be a, um, a coming on WordPress amount of time.
Okay. So shared services, I just increased additional meetings, um, for code review and things like that, special meetings with the budget. Municipal building repairs, we talked about. Highway equipment, I added thirty-five for first payment, one-third of a truck, including a little interest. I took out the auto lift and a stump grinder. I bumped up equipment repair by three thousand, with the thought that some of the smaller things that would've been done in-house for the past few months will now have to go back out. And the parking meter, I reduced by two hundred. So with those minor changes.
Sorry, uh, Michelle, what were the, what was the two hundred dollar expense that came out?
Um, the total annual expenses came out to forty-two fifty, I rounded it up to forty-five hundred, so I brought it back down to forty-three hundred, so I didn't have to round up so much.
Okay.
Right now, the way we're sitting, revenues are still greater than expenses by about sixty-nine hundred. So, there's a couple things we can do, that we can allocate that, um, to purchase other things, do a, um, we can allocate that to offset what we're dipping into fund bonds for, combination of the two, or not raise taxes in total amount. Just wanna put all the options out there.
We, um, the police department asked for a vehicle, and we said no this year, right?
Correct.
And yeah, I'm gonna throw something out, which is probably not necessarily for discussion tonight. Are we going to get to a point with the fire company that that building is not worth throwing hundreds of thousands of dollars into every once in a while? Is that building, I mean, we just put a new roof, and we're talking about a new boiler, we're talking about the wall? I mean, is that building, I don't know anything about construction, I don't know anything about any of that stuff.
So roof is the most important part, and that's done, um, and once we get a new boiler, that's kind of like a maintenance issue, it's not really the building itself, the structure. The, uh, the other, uh, thing that Steve looked into is this, uh, mold that's growing on the side, so that's really not a structural problem, it's a health problem, so.
So the building is still structurally okay for us to maintain, okay?
We could, we could always turn that into a mushroom farm.
True, and aside, if we get small people to go in there.
I think, okay, we should put solar panels on top.
One of the, uh, uh, something that I had sent to Dave, oh, a few weeks ago now, is a money allocation for parking meters on Main Street. I, I forget what the amount was.
I think he said it was fifty-four for eight.
For eight meters, uh, which we would take out a loan, and, you know, right now, interest rates are incredibly favorable, but it would be, a, a three-year loan would be, um, twenty thousand, something like that. I, I can't justify it, given the amount of revenue over expense.
Does it have to be a five, a three-year loan, would you consider a five-year loan?
We could do a five-year loan, I, I, I think I have numbers at home, because that was one of the alternatives for the parking meter there.
I think it's a, a, a really, a fairly big discussion if we do that.
Yeah.
Not just a class.
Should it be something that we should consider as a placeholder in the budget?
Uh, I don't know.
That, doesn't that go back to this whole permit parking thing on side streets?
No, I'm, I am assuming that we're never gonna do permit parking on the side streets, that, because there are insufficient parking spaces on the side streets to accommodate the eighty percent, which is required by the state.
So if we put parking meters on Main Street, the side streets are just gonna be more jammed.
Yep, but we would charge a rate for parking on Main Street, which would be more than we charge in the parking, at the parking lot. So I would recommend we charge two dollars an hour. And the parking meters would permit charging a dollar an hour Monday through Friday, and then two dollars an hour Saturday and Sunday and holidays, so I could do something like that.
I think it's a, a way bigger discussion.
Okay, okay, so, uh, we don't wanna.
I mean, I'd like to see all the details, how much money we, you know, think we'll be generating also, or maybe it's not about money. I mean, I guess the per, that we'd have to, and we shouldn't really be getting into this discussion about parking, and it could take for hours, but, you know, I think we need to know why we're doing it. Are we doing it to, for revenue, or are we doing it to free parking out? Do we think that's gonna move things along? I think that's, you know.
As it turns out, the answer is, is yes. By charging Main Street parking, you, you encourage turnover, and if the parking does not, the parking meters do not encourage turnover, you generate revenue. So it's, it's both. Okay.
Um, any other ideas on the budget?
I think we should keep it to max that we can, and see, and come up with, we, I'm sure there's gonna be something, I don't know.
Okay, so, um, in the meantime, to have a balanced budget, I would recommend that sixty-nine hundred, so fund balance, whatever we're taking out of it now, just drop it by sixty-nine hundred, and then if expenses come up before we adopt, we have, we know that we have sixty-nine hundred to play with, otherwise it just offsets what we're dipping into.
Michelle, in this, um, forfeited bail.
Yes.
Which is other revenue, did you ever get a response from Kathy?
It is not, it, the account line could be forfeited bail, but Tom has never forfeited bail.
But with the new laws, where bail is not set, are many, um, people, are we going to, are we going to, is that never gonna come down?
No, because Tom never turns over forfeited bail, so forfeited bail is like if somebody jumps bail, like they don't come to their court date. It doesn't happen in Tom's court, everybody shows up when they're supposed to, so he's never had to. That's what he says.
Okay.
I know he does have bail, that people don't come back.
Unclaimed bail, yes, but not forfeited bail.
Right, but, but, the, the question was basically, since the bail laws have changed in the state, and people are, many people are no longer required to post bail.
Right.
Would that line come down because of the new laws?
Um, that line is only, like, summonses and tickets and stuff like that, so I don't think it really, one has to do with the other.
So even though you call it fines and forfeited bail, it really just lines.
Because it's a state, right, it's a state, um, title of the account.
So if, if people never claim their bail.
That's separate and forfeited bail.
But is it in that line?
No, right now, unclaimed bail is still in the court's separate banking account.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question.
I had emails back, um, questions that I had received from some board members, um, responses. I'm not going to assume everybody read through it, so I didn't print it, um, as part of this discussion. So I heard from Lynn, Fran, Dave is asking questions. Lynn, do you have three questions on the budget?
I don't have three questions on the budget tonight.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I've been living through chaos. In the past couple days, and have not the attention that this deserves, so.
So.
So, I, I do have a question on the police line.
Yes.
The technology line came down. So, in the twenty-twenty-one budget, the technology line is down by fifteen hundred dollars. Why is that?
So last year, we had budgeted for computer upgrades.
Uh-huh.
At, well, the current fiscal year, now we're only budgeting for smaller software upgrades.
Okay, so, so then the question becomes, fifty-five hundred dollars for, for software upgrades is a lot of money.
In technology, it also includes a tuck book, which is, and the dock, which is four thousand right there.
I thought the tuck book and the dock were required if we got the new car, but since we're not getting the new car, we don't need a tuck book and dock.
I left it in there, and we could take it out, um, with the thought that the older car has an antiquated computer.
Yep.
And right now, the software that it's running is no longer supported by the state. So I'm afraid within the next sixteen months, the state's gonna come in and be like, we just can't use that computer. We don't want to purchase a new computer for an old vehicle.
Right.
But it may be, uh, handy.
Siren. I propose that we do not support the siren next year.
I concur.
I'm fine with taking that. I'm fine with taking that.
It's just the electricity and any repairs that might be in that line.
Okay.
Do you want me to draft a letter to the fire department?
Yeah.
So that will take out the, uh, Central Hudson power on that pole too?
I, I think that's what's in there. I think the siren is, uh, the Central Hudson plus and any repairs.
So you have this twenty-five, forty-five, it's a thousand dollars of repair, see that'll come out. Um, it includes roughly seven hundred in their other alarm contracts.
Yes.
Um, and then the rest is electricity.
Right. There are two items in, under the title siren. Neither which, the seven hundred dollars, neither of which have anything to do with the siren. One of them is a, um, a, a fire monitoring system for the firehouse, inside the firehouse.
Yeah, the slide up.
Right, and there's another, and that's, I think, the larger of the two. There's a second item, which is the smaller of the two, and I, I don't know what that is for, but it has nothing to do with the siren.
Okay, any other proposed changes?
Um, for streetlights.
Yes.
The number of LED streetlights has been increasing, in- increasingly, increasingly, increasingly. And I see that you have pared back the cost of the streetlights. Is that based upon the most recent bill or an average?
It's an average of the bills from June through January. I averaged them out.
Gotcha.
Projected it through the year, I put a five percent increase on it.
Okay.
I did that for all electricity lines.
That's great. And it appears as if the, um, uh, the cost of the Halden and Butterfield the flashing lights is coming down, which would imply that electric costs are coming down. But the subway, sorry, the gazebo. The van stand went up. Why so?
I can't answer that, or I can go, I just do street trends.
Okay. That's one, um.
I know it's higher around Christmas time, I don't know if there's more lights plugged in than were in the past. Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions?
So that's the general fund. With everything going on, how do we wanna do the budgets? I wanna talk about water and sewer a little bit too, but do we wanna do a budget schedule? Like I had adoption set for April twenty-fourth and then the, a public hearing, you know, two weeks prior. Um, do we need to meet again for that to discuss things? Do we wanna, if there's any changes, do them over email? Have one more meeting before the public hearing? Do discussions at the public hearing? Um, what's the board think?
I'm good with going through emails, and if anyone has questions, as long as we have all the information to look at and.
Oh.
Rachel.
Yeah.
So until we get guidelines, unless the state puts out guidelines, we'll assume that April fourteenth will still be the public hearing. And then April twenty-eighth would be adoption.
Maybe for the public hearing, I'll maybe recommend we do that, I don't know how many people come, probably none, but at the firehouse or somewhere where there's more space.
So you can have it in public?
So we could practice social distancing.
Yeah, we can't do that necessarily very well. This is the max of.
Michelle, on the, um, wastewater budget?
Yep, I wanna run through that.
And was that April what, the fourteenth or fifteenth?
Fourteenth, it's a Tuesday.
Was there a time we set for that?
Seven.
If, I would assume seven, because the regular monthly meeting would follow. Or if you wanted to do it a separate day, um, it does, we just, I tried to keep it with the meetings before social distancing became a thing.
Right, well, we got a little.
We have a little time to decide, but aim for around the fourteenth, needs to be, the public hearing can't be past the fifteenth of April.
Yeah, it struck me, there have been so many changes at the state level, uh, because of, um, the health situation. Has the state indicated that they are going to retain the dates for budgets?
They, I have not seen anything come out with that, and NICOM would be on top of that for us.
Okay.
Um, I have not heard.
Okay, thank you.
I think they're still only one or two days ahead instead of April and May in the future.
Now, for the, uh, for the public hearing, usually we don't have anything out or anywhere, or is it on our website before?
We post, um, the tentative budget beforehand.
Okay, so we, I think maybe this year we should put a little more emphasis on that?
Okay.
People wanna send in questions or whatever?
No, it has to be by the fifteenth.
The public hearing has to occur by April fifteenth.
So between now and April fifteenth, what do we have to do? You're working on the budget.
This is the tentative budget, by Friday, I have to give it to the clerk so that he could put a March twentieth stamp on it. And that suffices, the only requirement before the public hearing.
Do we want to do, try to schedule the public hearings sooner? I mean, as time goes on, I'm feeling that one of us is gonna end up being quarantined or whatever, you know, for whatever reason, we may end up losing. Remember, as we may end up, I don't know, I mean, I just want to be clear on that.
Can you go through the dates again, the fourteenth is the public hearing?
Yes.
And the twentieth is what?
Adoption.
Gotcha.
So the twentieth is the tentative budget to the clerk. That, that's this week.
Right.
Um, another deadline would be that the budget has to be presented by March thirty-first. I feel like I've presented it a few times, maybe not line by line, but everybody's had a chance to review it. We've talked about it, um, and then it's just public hearing and adoption.
So if it's presented, does that mean presented to us, presented to the public, presented?
Presented to the board of trustees for board review and modification if.
Can we do that by email?
Cause we're, we're holding a meeting right now.
Yeah, yeah, right, and then we have.
For the public hearing, whatever day it's decided, it has to be notified the public for five days before it's held.
Would you feel better, Fran, if we scheduled it for the seventh?
Um, flexible.
I think we, I mean, if we're all in agreement with the, the tentative, we get the information from Michelle and we move ahead, then I think we should move it as, I think we should move it up too, I think it's only gonna be a word.
Yeah.
Okay.
At least we won't know what we're.
So April seventh then for the public hearing?
Okay. Seven o'clock, and I'll see if we can get the firehouse to.
Don't tell him about the siren then.
I'm not gonna tell him, yeah.
Does that, um, put you in a bind, Michelle, at all?
No, that's not.
Okay, so the public hearing instead of the fourteenth will be the seventh, and you'll.
And then if the board even wants to, you can adopt as soon as five days after the public hearing. So if everything goes well at the public hearing and the board meets again on the fourteenth for the monthly meeting, you can adopt then.
Okay, and when will we have everything on the website after we have to send this stuff and we review it one more time? And anyone has questions or?
Um, so.
I'd like to just keep stuff on websites or as much as we can, so people know.
So, if there's no changes, um, the majority, the budget, the numbers are done, it's just the typing up of that stuff that I have to do. We can have everything up there by March twenty-seventh, and that gives them a week and a half, the public a week and a half to review. Maybe even earlier than March twenty-seventh, I started typing up some of the, the summaries, the narratives.
Okay.
So, April seventh will be the public hearing. Uh, Dave will try to get the firehouse for a bigger space. Um, that just has to be notified, so we'll let Jeff know. Um, if we're gonna keep this date, we could just notify, put it on notice now on the website, and that satisfies the five-day publication. Um, and then adopt on the fourteen.
Fourteen.
So water and sewer, real quick, um, cause we haven't talked much about them. Uh, to run through it, uh, how I calculate the revenue, the flat rates. I calculate it to the amount of meters in service for both water and sewer. It's to the penny. Um, I allocated some additional funding because I think that Butterfield, people are just gonna still buy a couple of those.
Yep.
Um, and I included new meter connections and final readings, um, with the real estate market. And Butterfield is something we've never budgeted for before, um, but we were looking at at least thirty to forty final readings over the past like year or so. Um, so I think fifteen is still conservative, but because we never budgeted before, and who knows now what's gonna happen with the housing market, I think, um, it's good to be conservative there. For waterfront fund balance, um, I allocated forty thousand for dam engineering in the past. This has always been a hundred thousand, but the dams don't seem like there's any much movement on it. At the end of the day, if everything goes well and we can start dam work tomorrow, we'll just up the increase that we need from the fund balance to cover it until we can get state funding or something else, or a bond or a ban. But I think a hundred is just way too much at this point. And that typically has always been for fund balance until we can find funding. And expenses, um, something that Matt has asked for, um, five thousand dollars for some pump repairs. The hot maintenance contract, a budget of ten thousand. Uh, I, he got back to me today, the total contract's only gonna come in at six thousand. So that is not reflected here. So that's four thousand that's gonna free up, um, so I would just move that four thousand, um, so that the fund balance would be thirty-six instead of forty.
I'm looking at, I'm sorry. Your notes?
Yep.
For the waterfront, you're talking about the hot maintenance contract?
Yep.
Estimated two thousand?
Two thousand, which is twenty percent for that one line, and then two lines down is eight thousand for eighty percent.
Gotcha, I'm sorry. I'm looking for.
It's a type of equipment.
Okay, gotcha, and it's not gonna be less because it's.
Yep. But it's still be split twenty and eighty for those two accounts. Personal services were updated as we discussed. Matt had requested an extra phone to be shared between his guys for on-call after hours. Um, so it's only an extra two forty for the year to be split between water and sewer. Uh, both two forty for water, two forty for sewer, so five hundred, cause it would be a smartphone. The phone would be free, it's just forty dollars a month for service. And the board doesn't have any objections. At one point in time, I think, um, Scott had a phone, he just didn't wanna carry two. But if they have a smartphone, they can get alerts to their phone, um, so that some of them can be answered from the phone.
And, and we've got equipment now that'll generate the alerts?
Yep.
Yep. One of the things that, um, that I had discussed with Matt, and although I haven't discussed it with Boggsy, it seems very reasonable, that all of the employees in the village, particularly Highway Water and Sewer, have badges that identify them as employees of the Village of Goldspring, so that they do not have any difficulty entering buildings. They have been denied entry in the past because they could not demonstrate that they were, um, uh, uh, employed by the village. I, I mean, it's going to be a small amount of money, but it will be, um, a badge with a, a photo ID for, uh, Water, Sewer, and I would think we should get them for Highway as well. So if you could put some amount of money.
Yeah, that, I don't think it would be that much, we can even probably look into doing that sooner than later. If great printing doesn't, that would even be better.
Oh, right, well, we, Bill used to be able to do that for us. Bill Bjarzki, he had a printer that could do that, but not anymore.
Um, alright, then I can follow up with Larry because I'm sure that all the police officers have to carry a Goldspring ID. Um, so wherever he gets theirs made, we could follow up.
Did you increase the endpoint costs based upon the addition?
It's a formula.
Yep.
Yep. Um.
Is, in the water and sewer, sorry, in wastewater?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's the siding that still needs to go on to the new building.
Mm-hmm.
Is.
Now, that's a capital project that comes out of the ban funding.
Okay.
So there is money left to do that though, um, but it won't be reflected here.
We discussed with, um, Matt on the rehab of the filters.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to remember how the conversation went, does he have money to do one this year?
Yes.
So he's gonna do one this year, is he able to, did he get it?
I don't know where he stands on it, but, um, they're twenty to twenty-five thousand to do one filter. Um, there are three of them, filter number two is in really bad shape. But he does have the funding if he wanted to try and do this year. I don't know what the prep work would entail for timing was, but he can.
Do you want me to go back and double-check with him, or will you double-check with him with it?
I can email him.
Yeah, if he has my this year's budget, we can get one of them, that'd be great.
You had one in there, didn't you?
I put one in for twenty-twenty-one.
Yep.
Um, overall, um, what Matt would like to do is start stocking up some of his inventory. If key, um, pieces of equipment or crucial parts, um, go down at like two in the morning, he can replace them. Um, he knows it's expensive and he doesn't wanna have one of everything on hand, um, but just some of the important pieces. And it's something that, um, we have a couple, but not enough. He's worried about, you know, putting strain on other equipment, um, or waiting two weeks. So at the end of his budget years, some money that's left over that would typically go into fund balance, we would let some of it still go into fund balance, but maybe use a little bit of that to purchase supplies. He wouldn't do it in the beginning of the year because we never know what's gonna happen in the water and sewer plants. I put in a new truck, fifty-fifty, um, fifty-one total, uh, for three years, including interest. Probably a little high, but the last truck was forty-five, um, and that was four or five years ago. Um, and split between both funds, it's only eight-five hundred a fund. And then, that's it, the sewer fund is the same thing as the waterfront. I calculate by, um, by meter. Um, and the one big thing in sewer that he wanted to add was three thousand dollar increase to clean the pump stations. They were cleaned in the past on a as needed basis, but since all the pump stations have pretty much been redone, he wants to keep them in better shape.
Sounds. What do you do, hire merry maids to do that?
It's, it's sludge pumping is the same thing. It's gonna be.
The, uh, fifty percent of the truck, I see it in the waterfront, I don't see it in the sewer fund, I mean, some, I'm probably.
It's in the sewer fund, G eighty-one thirty-two hundred?
It does not in the text.
Oh, sorry.
That's where you're, that's where you're looking for.
Yeah, I was looking for the other half of the text.
Or it, it is in the worksheet, so.
It's in the thirteen-five, okay.
Yeah.
Not a problem, thank you.
It's in the important part, place.
The servers went down last night when I was typing this up, so I was doing some off memory on my personal computer and then trying to transfer it back to the work computer.
Nice work, Michelle.
Does anyone else, I think you have any input on the water and sewer funds? We don't know all that much, um, Matt seems to know more about it, so Fran and I met with him, we did the budget, he sent me the sheets. Um, he asked for guidance on some lines, um, so the first year, it's gonna be a trial, then he'll have a better idea of what else he needs in the budget. And anything.
And he said, I think he said this to a lot of us, but the, um, idea of like, I'm gonna, this is gonna sound stupid, but squishing the, the sludge so that it, it doesn't have all the water, we're not, he doesn't think that's a good idea, there's other things to do rather than that. And that was tremendous, expensive. I don't know.
Fifteen watering project, it's a screw press, it's seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, probably wouldn't do, he's working with the health department for allowable chemicals that he's used in other places.
Yeah, the return on investment would be ten to twenty years.
Yeah, by that time, it would be so outdated. Michelle, this is phenomenal, thank you.
Maybe some new technology will come along.
I think eventually.
That one will be less expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there'll be no humans.
Yeah.
Maybe there's gonna be that too.
They won't need us, that works for me.
So we'll leave these numbers, I'll keep reviewing them before we get to the public hearing if anything, like I see changes, but I think this budget is like ninety-five percent where it's going to be.
When do you think you're gonna have an updated set of, um, files for us to look at?
Maybe Saturday?
That'd be great.
I have to have the numbers updated by Friday for.
Anyway, yep, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, so to have all the stuff typed out, I would say, you know, for Saturday. And then the last thing, in the budget, there's a note from the mayor and the board. Is there anything that we need to put in there? I usually just keep the template from last year. I include any big changes, so I include new capital purchases. We don't have to talk about salary in there. The board can say whatever they want, they can say nothing. Just put it out there, when you get it and it says message from Mayor Morandi and the board, if you want something typed up in that cover sheet, we can. Otherwise, it'll just be like, the general fund is this, the water fund is this, it's very basic stuff.
It's addressed to the public?
Yes, it's the cover letter of the budget.
You could identify the garden street you paid in, the.
It would be, I'm sorry, stuff that's in the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay, so there are projects that you've identified in the.
This one where you have, when we're going, talking about these seasonal labors and everything, that's all good. We ran that by you?
Yeah.
The numbers and the hours and everything.
Yeah. Seasonal, they usually.
The first one is like a new, would be new, kind of, that's a part-time, just to have, so we have someone to drive the dump truck and free bug field.
So is this going to be something that carries into next year, or is it temporary until a new hire comes?
This person for the garbage CDL, it'd be ongoing if he doesn't find jobs or whatever, I don't know what is.
Should there's something that I should put into the budget for next year?
Well, you've got that, that.
I guess.
Line item in there, which was the mechanic slash laborer, that this person would be paid out of that.
No, but then we'd be getting, no, we would get, we're hiring someone, we're gonna, that was to take over Joe's position.
Gotcha.
So this would be in addition to that.
Okay.
I think unless we find, you know, the only thing, if we find somebody that has a CDL and can, this guy's sort of like, I don't know how many years of driving trucks.
He was one of the jobs.
I don't think we'd want it full-time.
Okay, yeah.
He's a good, he'd be good driving a truck.
Okay.
So if, so to answer Michelle's question, is this another line item that we're gonna have?
Yeah, I think, I think we should, you know, it's hard to say.
So we had sixty-nine hundred.
Which you thought you had.
This guy would be fifteen, eight hundred for two days a week into the next budget. I can move stuff around if we wanna keep him, you know, maybe cut from, I could take the dump bag out.
I think it's a valid, you know, I just don't know if he'll stay or if he's looking for full-time or whatever. It's like fifty-five, five hundred.
I mean, it also depends on whether we hire somebody with a CDL.
Right.
But there's plenty of savings this year, even though this, these things weren't budgeted for. We had a, we have a big savings from health insurance, so we can cover, you know, throughout the end of the year for extra help.
But you'll put him in for next, for the new one?
I already have a seasonal laborer in next year's budget, I had them at thirteen an hour, but I can up them to fourteen for next year.
But we have seasonal laborers that, that we're gonna discuss tonight, which are different from this guy.
I understand that. In the twenty twenty-one budget, I always include a seasonal laborer for the highways department, but I just included them at thirteen an hour because that's what they were paid last year. So I can up that, if we would keep them through mid-August at fourteen an hour, I would have to add that money into the budget as well.
I'm sorry, say that again, we wanna keep a seasonal laborer in the budget for twenty twenty-one?
Yes, we have one.
Okay.
At thirteen an hour.
Okay.
But the agenda is to hire someone at fourteen an hour, so I have to increase the highways a little bit.
Okay.
Now, we have, we had two last year, do we have two for this year in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, you just had one, so to be clear on that.
I had one for forty hours for twenty-six weeks. Or what we've been doing, two, you know, up to thirty, and then that spreads you a couple, like, I don't know, like fifteen, sixteen weeks, something like that.
Right.
So last year, what did we pay the seasonal laborer?
Thirteen dollars.
Okay, and this year we're saying fourteen?
That's what.
Well, this is for discussion tonight.
Oh, okay.
Put fourteen in there. We could knock him down to five, see, I don't know, but no, that's the number I put in there. Same with the nineteen an hour for the driver, we're paying Joe. I don't know, it's not, it's not like we're starting this guy, this guy has, this guy's a driver or whatever. He's been around, he's been working with Royal or whatever, and so we can trust him. He knows how to run a garbage truck, he knows what to look for, he knows how to handle the guys, he knows what the, like, safety issues. You know, we, you know, sat and talked with him, I sat and talked to him with Boggy. You know, he knew all the safety issues involved, the guys that are working on the back and, you know. So he seems good. The only thing that I definitely wanted to look into, I think we have conditionally, is I think he's. Yeah, for number seven, he checked all the yes boxes.
I was looking at that, do not hire this guy.
But, so I want to, I would conditionally hire him until we, I wanna find.
I'm assuming that he did not read this book.
Jeff, yeah, he doesn't, I think he doesn't have the capabilities of filling these out. Jeff called the, called the, called his supervisor Royal, and the guy said he was a great driver and everything, so, nothing was mentioned.
The other thing is on the driver's license, page two of his application, his driver's license expiration date is December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Turns out this form that he submitted, he filled out in November of two thousand eighteen, so it's an old form.
No, there's nothing, can we somewhere along the line get newer, clearer forms from Platinum County? I mean, how many times are we going to just keep copying the same form? There's gonna, there's gonna be a way that you can get a clear form, because these things are ancient. And they're copied and re-copied.
So it looks, given the, the, the application that he submitted, it appears as if, it appears as if he's currently full-time employed by Royal.
Right, which he isn't.
Okay, I was wondering if he was.
I think he left them in January, he said.
Did Jeff pull this out of a file we have for him from last year?
Um, well, he might have, but then we told he was here, and I thought he filled them, they went out and filled out, Jeff gave him the other sheets to fill out, so. I, I, I would like, you know, we can hire, like I said, conditionally, I will look more into this, the yes thing that he put here. It says you don't have to, have to put in an explanation, but it could be a reason not to be hired or disqualify you, so.
Given that he'd said yes to everything, I've been arrested, I've been convicted of a crime, I have resigned from employment.
I forced it out.
You know, everything.
The application was wrong.
But if, if your investigation says that he's looking for a job and he has.
A clean record or.
Well, a good driving record.
A good record, yeah.
So you wanna make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we conditionally hire Robert Newhall as a part-time driver for Highway. Nineteen dollars an hour, up to sixteen hours a week. That's gotta be conditioned on.
A clean, clean record?
My investigation into his answers on the application.
And he needs a new application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
A starting when?
Oh.
Yes.
As soon as we clear it, I guess, I don't know.
So ASAP?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, second's approved hiring a seasonal laborer was thirteen to fourteen, let's get that clear first. What do we, get that one?
No, these guys work with.
Adrian, I guess, is that his name, Adrian? He worked last, Aiden, Aiden worked last year.
Are they under Boggsy's direction or Bruce's direction?
Boggsy's, totally Boggsy's.
Okay. It seems to me that if they were employed at thirteen dollars an hour last week, last year, that an increase to fourteen dollars this year is not necessarily warranted, maybe thirteen fifty?
I'm gonna, where do you lean?
That makes sense to me.
For him.
Okay, thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty. Well, I mean, we're, we would be giving, they'd be giving them an increase, an hourly increase larger than we would be giving our full-time employees, so.
So one of them is a rehire, one of them's new, right?
What's that?
One of them is a rehire and one of them is new?
Yes, Adam Hoteling, I think it's Adam Hoteling Junior, actually.
And basically they cut grass and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and the thought was that we hire them as soon, as soon as we can, then they would start cleaning up, kind of be dedicated to McCombo Park and cleaning all that up and getting the parks up to snuff so Bruce can take over. Just the regular maintenance.
You had these in a specific order, and I think that's the order that needs to be done. Boggsy's time needs to be freed up from driving garbage trucks so that he can give them direction.
Right.
And assistance, so it seems to me that getting Newhall on board, then the seasonal labors can, can start.
Right.
Okay, so I'm fine with.
Okay, so I'll make a motion hiring the two individuals on here, Aiden Segal and Adam Hoteling, the thirteen fifty an hour part, or seasonal help.
A second.
All in favor?
Um, when did you expect that they would start?
I guess we'll have to wait, I think that's a good point, that we have to get the guy on, the driver, I guess, as soon as possible.
We need Boggsy's time.
Yeah, so it's up to Boggy.
Yeah, obviously home from college.
Yeah.
The better or the worse.
Yeah, Aiden's home, and he asked, you know, he's not, he said that like someday he might not make it because he has online tests or online classes.
Oh, right, right, right.
Because of, until college is over or whatever, whenever that happens now. The others.
Does Michelle need to stay with us?
No, you can leave, sorry.
Definitely Michelle leaving.
Appreciate all of your work. Next is the guy that's paying employees during this epidemic, and we've told to basically stay home. I think she comes in one ahead of the three days. I don't know if this sets a precedent or what we do if any other people are out, I don't know.
So Ann is one person, Tom is the second person, right? Because court isn't being conducted. Carol and Tom Haring.
Yeah, but Carol and Tom, do they, can they apply for unemployment?
They can, I don't know what the situation.
My pleasure.
My pleasure, I would ask them to try to apply for.
Well, Tom would also be unemployment.
I, you know, I don't know, I mean, Ann can't, but can Tom, because Tom's really not a full-time employee.
Well, neither are Carol or Tom. Tom, Tom Costello's not for them.
I don't know, I know that Carol, Carol.
Both.
Applies for unemployment in the, in the summer, which is sort of, which I was surprised of because she was a part-time employee.
Maybe she makes some.
It may have something to do with the school.
Might be how many hours a week you work.
On the job or whatever, I don't know. I mean, we budgeted for these people as if they're working for, the thing with, like, if we pay Tom.
Costello?
If Tom Costello for working when he's not, and then he comes in, he doesn't charge us overtime or anything, he just does what he does.
Just, yeah, it's, it's a flat rate.
It's not their fault, you know, he's, he's gonna eventually have to probably make up all the stuff that he hasn't done, so it's gonna, it's gonna be a little more hours. I'm good, I'm good with, you know, paying them whatever their flat rate is. We expected to pay them for the whole year, it's not that it's gonna cost us anymore, we're just not gonna get it.
With the understanding that when conditions change, there will be no additional compensation.
Right, yeah, so, for example, Kathy ended up, we had to do some overtime, and we've paid her for hours she hasn't worked.
Wait, Kathy didn't say, sorry, Kathy, Kathy's not on the list.
Okay, I, I.
Should she be on the list?
I don't think so.
I, I think Kathy is coming in.
Kathy can, Kathy don't wanna walk her, she can come in, I don't know, I mean, who knows if an employee can at some point say, I don't feel safe and I'm not coming in.
No, no, that's not, the, the, look, sorry, I thought that Ann wasn't working because we didn't have work for her to do. Is that not the case?
Well, there's interaction with people and we don't want her interacting with anyone.
But with the front door locked, that.
Yeah, there's really nothing.
Then I guess there's nothing for her to do, is that right? I mean, the other stuff is birth certificates where people are coming in. We said you can, we'll have to do that by mailing it in, so we closed that down. But there were a lot of walk-ins on that, I don't know what else, I don't know everything that she does.
I, I mean, the, the reason why we're having this discussion is because I'm assuming that she doesn't have work to keep her busy. Now, next month, that may not be the case, next month the water bills go out.
Right.
And so she will be preparing for the water bills, sending them out, and then receiving the water bills. So this is a temporary situation.
I think the other thing was the less people we have in here with Jeff's condition of COPD, the maybe the better.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with Ann, I wasn't even thinking the, I was, oh, actually wasn't thinking Tom and.
Kathy.
Kathy, I think is coming in, I mean, I'm.
I know she's, she's coming in.
In the office, it's, it's.
Question is, is she busy?
In the office, it's Jeff, Kathy and Ann, Ann.
Is she busy? Sorry, there are a couple of different factors. One is, you don't want as many people in the building. So Jeff is in the building, Kathy isn't in the building, Michelle is in the building?
Often on.
Michelle's mostly as much as she can stay home. When it's payroll, she comes in and Ann came into, comes in for payroll.
So, and, and Ann is here. So first objective is to keep the number of people in the building down as much as possible.
Right.
So.
And have, I don't know what.
For health reasons.
For health reasons, and I'm not sure what, I guess, I guess the question would go to Jeff. I mean, if she has work to do and she can go in her office, she's away from Jeff.
Right, right.
So I don't see why she couldn't work.
Yeah, I mean, I, he had said to me the other day that like, you know, he had told her, she came in one day and they told her not to come in for the rest of the week, so I assumed that, that meant she had nothing else to do.
All right, so let me, let me talk to Jeff tomorrow.
I mean, I'm fine with, you know, just given Ann her flat, whatever it is, which is five hours, what, fifteen hours a week she works.
She's definitely gonna be here one day a week.
Yep.
But, but if there's no work for her to do, then I don't know why we say, you know, don't come in, and, but we're gonna pay you if there is no work to do. Next month, you know, we've worked.
Because it's not her fault that she has to be out of here.
But.
And she has to, she has a very minimal salary and she depends on the salary to live, you know, whatever, I mean, it's.
Put it out to one side.
I know, no, I can't, because, I mean, we've budgeted for, to pay people for the year, so, you know. If she took vacation time, which ends, we don't pay her for vacation because she's a part-time worker, so, you know, I mean, she would, she would realistically work three days a week.
So why not have her here doing three days a week? Other, I understand the health issue, and, and that's real.
I mean, you know, I think.
But we're gonna have to have her here three days a week in a.
Yeah, well, or whatever she, I mean, the best she can do if she, if she's not well, or if she can't come in, or whatever issues, you know, I mean, worst case scenario, we may decide that the water bills are gonna have to be a month late, you know, I mean.
Why would we ever decide that?
I don't know, because, because the staff can't come in, because maybe Ann gets sick or Jeff gets sick and we can't do it.
Getting sick is, is, is a different situation. It, it just surprised me that, that there was no work for her to do for, for the, for three days this week.
I think we need a better explanation, I don't know if that's actually the explanation, but, but, I don't know if it was just totally health reasons and let's not, you know, it's not essential work. And I think that's what the recommendation is, I think it's actually fifty percent of your essential staff should be cut.
Yeah, that was.
According to the government.
That's today's, that's the latest one today.
Which is today.
Oh, I, I just heard about it today, and it starts on Friday.
It's today.
So, I mean, then the, yeah, I think we have to be careful on this. Okay, so you're gonna.
Let me, let me talk to Jeff tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and we'll, we'll see if there's work for her to do and whatever, and I'll talk to her and, and see what the story is totally on that. And we'll see if there's work for her to do and whatever, and I'll talk to her and see what the story is totally on that. The last, I don't think we need to go into exact session, but there's the property again, it was another offer made by Josh Meyer, who I think made the offer, it's the property at the corner of Moffett and Healy, we.
You don't want to, yeah.
Don't want to. I don't think we have to go into exact session, I mean, I sent you guys all the information, whether or not you want to go ahead with this.
Yes, I do, I do.
Did you have all the information or?
I don't, I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
It's property that, when Greg was here, we had him check it out, and it's not of any use.
And we pay taxes on it.
Well, in that case, it's.
Because it's a, it's a triangle piece and it's only, it's an acre or so, and zoning doesn't allow you to build on that. So what they want to do is protect it because they've lived up there for Greg, his mom, and I guess.
Sounds like they'll take good care of it then, and not let it go.
We do want to check one thing out with him before we do this, I did mention that he'd have to pay for all the closing costs.
David, where's the property again?
The property is in the corner of Healy and Moffett.
Thank you.
I don't know the address.
It's open session here.
What's that? I don't think it has to be an executive session.
The reason that you do it for your property is so that.
I understand totally what you do, we have an offer here, and are we willing to accept it or not?
I just have a question, but I will. Did you say you had to do something else?
I wanted to talk to Josh about one, one thing before we totally finalize it, he had mentioned something.
Do we have to put this out for good?
No, I talked to John about that already. I think we talked about it the last time.
Yeah, I remember that, and I don't remember the answer, sorry. It happens when you get old, you forget these things. I mean, I'm fine with it, I have no problem.
If you guys are willing, if you're, I guess the question is tonight is if you're willing to, if you consider that, or you want to sell it for this amount.
Yes, and I say yes.
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 If you change your mind, I mean, I want to talk, he said something at the end of the last conversation, which I want to clear on, and he said he was willing to put easements on it too, if we wanted to make sure we protect it. Anything else?
We, we're scheduled for next week, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah, and if anyone doesn't feel, at any point, I don't think it's essential that we have to be there, just, you know, the days we have, just for the budget is probably it.
We did, I don't know, it's, what's going to be on the agenda next Tuesday, maybe we did a lot of stuff tonight that may have played up next Tuesday.
What's that?
It's if we do stuff tonight that would, would mean we don't have to do next Tuesday. And Wednesday is the code stuff, right?
Yep.
What is that?
Wednesday's code stuff, yep.
Yeah. So that's definitely not essential, so if everyone doesn't want to do that, we can not do that.
We're separated, we're okay.
Just double checking.
And is there anything else?
So that's if, the next Wednesday's code meeting is not happening, or?
No, 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 no.
You'll let me know?
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday, seven thirty, normal board meeting. We have a meeting on Wednesday at seven thirty, code review.
Wednesday, seven thirty, or seven, seven thirty?
Seven thirty because Lynn, Lynn, we've been doing seven thirty because Lynn has a challenge getting here at seven o'clock. If we do do the code review next Wednesday, we should not do it in the office.
No, we'll do it out here.
Okay.
And also, Jack is, Jack is changing his treatment so that seven thirty can go to seven for me. Even though I just wound up scrambling at the last minute and getting way late, I would have been here at seven if I had not.
Okay, so seven o'clock.
So, yeah.
Great.
Seven o'clock on Wednesday for code review. Can you remind me which chapters we're looking at next week? Does anybody have that?
H D R B.
H D R B and swimming pools.
Swimming pools?
Yeah, and we got that whole thing from.
Do you?
One fourteen seventy-one, seventy-six, ninety-three, ninety-seven, and one oh-four and one oh-six.
I asked you if you want to meet and update it.
Update what?
The swimming pool.
The code.
The swimming pool one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I didn't know exactly what you meant on that, I think you should.
I'll just, I'll just integrate it into our code.
Simply or whatever you think we need.
I did find a clearer, a clearer page on that, Murray.
Okay.
You know, I do have to look for it again, but I'll send it to you, because you've been going along to.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all, stay safe. Stay healthy.
Stay healthy.
Stephanie working from home, or is she?
Yeah, no, she's home. So one of us will probably die from a fire, sorry. Thank you, Michael.